I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. And we're going to have our pledge, and I'll lead us in the pledge and bid house going to give our indication.
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this nation. We thank you for this community and all that it means to us. We thank you that we live in a country that we do not live in fear. We pray that you'd be with our national leaders at this critical hour as they make crucial decisions for our welfare. We pray that you would be with this city council and this mayor. Father, we just pray that you just bless it, bless it in spirit, bless it as it debates the issues and that it comes to harmonious decisions, Father, for the benefit of this community. Christ, amen.
Thank you. I appreciate it. First out of the honor of adjournment tonight is a recommendation to approve a minutes from our last meeting. You got a chance to get those minutes and is there a recommendation to approve?
I'll make the recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So you're in discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye. Number two is a recommendation to approve the council's payable bills. Trusted, council has had a chance to look at those bills and is there a motion to pay those bills?
I'll make a motion. To bring them.
Is there a second? Got them payable bills? I'll make a second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Number three is a recommendation to approve a resolution, number 2013-938. This is granting the mayor authority to borrow $2 million from the bank being the lowest interest rate. What this is, y'all, is us getting a line of credit until we can finish the downtown revitalization, which we need. It'll be till one year. We had three banks bid on this. First National was the lowest, and they give those proposals. First National bid. This is interest only. All we have to pay is interest only until it matures. And at that time, then we'll have to do a bond issue of our money to pay it off. Interest only is a fixed rate of 1.32 percent. People's Trust also bid on this. Thursday was 1.73 percent. And First State Bank bid a flat rate of 2.5 percent. So my recommendation would be to allow First National to have this line of credit until we can finish our downtown revitalization. We do have money put back, some money, but we don't have over $2 million to finish this project. So what this will do, give us enough line of credit plus what we have to finish this project. And at that time, we can, you know, we've had discussion amongst ourselves and we don't have to get real serious about a couple of things that we want to do. And that's a Muntz and Ware building or a park for our kids, a water park. And I suggest that we look seriously at doing both. And at that time, we will be eligible to either refinance or restructure some of our financing. And what I've been trying to do is work with someone that we can leave our debt service, amount we pay per year to be about the same. That way it won't be increasing our yearly debt. Our time would be expended, of course, but amount we pay per year. And see what we can do. And we got time to do that. Over the next couple of months, we need to really think about those two projects or anything else that we might need some kind of infrastructure that we're going to do. It's going to take experts to tell us about Muntz and Ware building. That's going to cost, could cost about just $10,000 or more just to get structural engineers to tell us. We know we want to, thought we might want to keep that building and maybe tear it as part of the town. It's time to get real serious about it and see what we can do. So the $2 million to get us through until this project's done downtown. And we got time to do that. But then by next summer, when we can borrow more money if we need to, then we can add these other projects with it.
Is this borrowing or a line of credit?
This is a line of credit for the downtown, wherever we need money. Whenever we need money, we just draw down, we just pay interest on it.
Right.
A line of credit.
That's true. So you'd just be paying interest?
That's all.
During this time frame of this project?
Of this project.
Which would be, what, nine months or?
Probably, or longer if it was 16 years, but hopefully not. Right now, they're on schedule. So it may not look like it, but they are. And now work they've done is on schedule, what they thought it would be.
But the big decision on what you would do as far as, excuse me for saying, real financing for the final financing, that would come probably next year? Would it come?
Probably next spring, early summer.
Make a decision then as far as what you're doing.
Okay. But we don't know how much we don't need if we do these other projects. And if we don't, we might do something similar. If we really want to do these other projects.
Some of them made it a big center in this council of time for getting right things over.
Well, as far as Muntz and Ware and that area, which the water parks, are y'all looking about getting a more thorough cost estimate?
I would like to say, we've got general estimates. I've had estimates from six to $10 million. You know, we can spend as much as you want to spend. Or we can do something in phases. Hopefully may not get what we can while we're here, like Tim, you know, we talked about that, Tim. But we don't, might get the Taj Mahal. We might get something that we can live with for a year or two and then hopefully do something that stays as if that thought would choose.
But you need to eventually make the decision.
Exactly.
What, a cost estimate?
Right.
So are you looking at getting a formal?
I would, you know, ask for the council's decision, but yeah, I would like to see over the next couple of months, really get serious about what we want to do with that building or anything else. But this tonight's just, really just for this project here. Do we have a motion to approve this recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, great. I'll say it. Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Thank you. Okay. At this time, there's a resolution that, I'm going to let Chief Baker explain to us. This is a resolution that we got from the league municipalities and this is their suggestion. So, Ryan, if you would, I'd let you, you want this mic or can we talk louder than that?
I can talk louder than that. Yes, sir. The, about two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, I think, each one of you have a package of results of a law prevention assessment that the league municipalities came up, set down. This has to do with my department only, the results from it. I think we had four little issues of which we're trying to correct. In my SOP, there is no resolution in which the league municipality assessment officer requested that we needed one put in there. He highly recommended that we have one put in there, suggested. Sent me a copy of what is most commonly used. I think each one of you have a copy of it already. It is an assessment. And what it is, is resolution allowing myself to have, what I mean is already what I do, but is to field control, plan our officers, wire uniforms for off-duty jobs, whenever they use city equipment for off-duty situations, secondary jobs, part-time jobs, and all this kind of stuff. A lot of times we'll have, like the incident with Hackleburg, you know, we had a situation where we had in Hackleburg a couple of years ago. If I sent officers up to help enforce, you know, law, state law and stuff, you know, then they would be wearing our uniforms and wearing our vehicles and using our vehicles and stuff. We already do it with the ramp down here. Now, the ramp takes care of those officers. They're actually working for the ramp. They do it in traffic, use traffic control, air traffic control devices, air traffic control safety equipment. We do it in our uniforms, we do it in our patrol car. It's a high visibility effort, you know, it's a PR effort for the department, and it don't cost us anything, the ramp one. Their security issues went base for all of it.
And they're off-duty at the time?
And they're off-duty at the time. This is only dealing with off-duty talent. I have a couple of officers, I think, that work for Soligent. When they're Soligent, they use Soligent equipment, they use Soligent cars, they use Soligent uniforms. I have one that's on schedule with the Sheriff's Department. He does like three, four times a month. He does Sheriff's Department cars, Sheriff's Department uniforms, you know, Sheriff's Department steward, he works for them. I have another one that's on, that works part-time for Brine. Whenever he's working at Brine, he does Brine uniform, Brine equipment, Brine equipment. None of my people use their equipment, city equipment, outside of anything that I would have say so over, according to this resolution. What's something happens, let him get hurt working a little job. The other jobs, you also, the league municipalities requires that whoever they work for has $100,000 minimum liability insurance. Now, if they get hurt while they're in Soligent, they're on Soligent's day. If they get hurt while they're working the Sheriff's Department, they're on Sheriff's Department's day. Working for the ramp, the ramp has $2 million worth of liability insurance to cover them working for them down there. And that's one of the reasons for this resolution to be put into my SOP, so that there's no kickback on us. Our attorney has reviewed it. He has no issues that I'm aware of with it.
Are you aware, Ryan, when they are working on their off days other places? Not that it makes any difference, I don't reckon, but do you know when they work on their off days other places?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, like if you were, I'd have a need for them to call them in and they're elsewhere. Are you aware, pretty much, they let you know?
Yes, ma'am, to an extent. One of my general rules, if they're part-time job, you know, is their part-time job. This is their primary job. So if I need them here, their secondary job has to find somebody that applies to me.
Okay, I swear I'm getting it. All right, thank you.
I guess my biggest concern is, and I've talked to Scott several times today, is the fact that the officers themselves are compensated, but yet they're using uniforms that the city purchased, equipment that the city purchased, but yet the city isn't getting compensation. And I don't know if being parked down there in the street with the vehicle running for three or four or six or eight or two hours' power along there down there, I don't know about the wear and tear on the vehicles. And I was concerned about the compensation to the city as far as the equipment, when it seems to me that the officers are being compensated, but the city isn't, and the city should provide the equipment that they're using.
It was a situation set up prior to my administration in this police department. It's my understanding that the equipment that's used, the wear and tear on it is actually if it is sitting there running at the time because the lights are running and everything. And the city's gas is involved there. But as far as the compensation, it's just, you know, basically what their power is paid is.
I wonder if this started as a sort of PR thing?
I think it was.
And then you got to think about, and Timmy's got a point, but you got to think about what it costs us in compared to what they bring to the city. That's just sort of my thinking on it.
My question?
I use it as a public relation to it, you know, because the ramp brings in a lot of people from around the county, around the state, around the other states, from different countries, you know, and it's just, you know, they have some security, some crossing guards down there, but we use this PR. Guys use it to kind of compensate your income a little bit. We just want to be there helping them.
Well, isn't it as much, you know, in terms of, say, if you had a, you go to the Hoover, you're used to a Hoover Met and you have officers trying to help you get out, you know, isn't a safety factor really because you've got people crossing that highway?
It is. It really keeps somebody from having to stay out there at some duty.
Yeah.
I couldn't afford, I couldn't afford to have somebody out there at some duty. It had to be done on off-duty. And it's been discussed with the ranch, reason that they paid the officers compensation.
And they have hired liability, $100,000.
They have $2 million liability.
I personally don't have a problem with that. I've looked over, talked to Scott about it. And, you know, if the league recommends this type resolution, obviously they represent the whole state of Alabama and hundreds of police office departments, and they don't have a problem with it.
None of our equipment, Ronnie, if they go to Soligent, our duty belts, our firearms, they stay here, they're not used. So they stay with the officers. They're not, to my knowledge, they're not using them anymore. Uniforms are nothing, card or anything. And service for a lot of them. I don't think so. I can't specifically answer that question. I can check on it, but I don't think so. I don't think, I don't have a problem with them working these other places, but I don't think that they'd use any equipment from the city.
Does any other comments, counsel? Is there a motion or a recommendation to approve this resolution?
Can we add it in there that no city equipment be used other than the, I mean, that ramp, that's inside our jurisdiction, that's a different ballgame. That's mainly where I try to, you know, limit our stuff to. Even down here, I've got one officer that works part-time at Bevel, and they don't wire their stuff, they don't use their stuff there at Bevel, because they have their own police department, their own liability insurance.
But you're just talking, are you just talking about outside the city?
Outside our jurisdiction. You know, I tried, three, three times I've sat on the board, tried to use, brought up, using part-time help here, save money, retirement, whatever, you know, we never went that route out. Most cities doing that, saving money. From here, we, we're helping them, and I guess we just hire everybody. But it's a good deal for the towns like that, because they don't have to pay them at the time.
And all my hours.
They just pick them up from here and there, because I got a bunch of friends that do.
So Tim, if you made a motion, what would it be that?
I don't know. They're working part-time job, just as long as they don't use no service devices or no personal, no city equipment other than here in our jurisdiction, like Ronnie's doing with the ramp.
Okay, you know, that's my opinion.
Do they purchase their guns or does the city?
We provide those.
We provide a duty weapon here, but they purchase anything other than their duty weapons and department-issued weapons, they purchase them themselves. They also have to be qualified with those. That's part of the question on the assessment. They have to be qualified with all backups and off-duty weapons that they may possibly carry. So they're qualified with the other weapons?
Yes. And what about the dog? Is it being used? It's not being used no other place unless they're called out from here. If our dog is used in any assistance, we'll be using them assistance only to another department. It's not used like if Zach's working for the county, the dog gets to stay home. Their car's not equipped for it, you know, it's not part of their equipment, it's part of ours. A lot of other agencies doing this. I don't have a problem with it.
Scott, you understand why he's wanting to change in that?
Yes, sir.
No public equipment outside the police jurisdiction.
Okay, is there a motion to that?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Let's move to number six recommendation. We'll come back to number five just a second. Number six is a recommendation to approve the contribution to NACOG senior aid program for $1,000. I think this is what we do yearly from NACOG and just make a recommendation, we would to continue supporting our senior aid program. The one in hand that we have now in the last few months, Francis can tell you, is growing by leaps and bounds. And it started after we got some publicity and after Ed Dunn's story. They're up to 25 to 60 meals a day.
At 58 today.
That's counting the ones they take out, but it's growing like crazy.
At 58 today. 58, that includes homebound and the ones that go.
And she's doing a great job.
2025, 30.
All kind of activities and taking them out on a ton of places, and it's just really doing great, really proud of them.
You know, we know NACOG does it for us, but this has a senior aid program. I strongly recommend we continue to support.
We've got to have a, got to have an assistant for it, so.
Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
Second.
Continue, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Lynn, I'll let you talk about this agreement here with the Coca-Cola. This is something that the Red Board has met and decided they would like to recommend Coca-Cola get the bid. And I've talked with Larry Armstrong today, and he's fully aware of this and 100% support of it. He's backed it 100%. So Lynn, you know more about this now. Then I'm going to let you. It's just basically an agreement that we'll use their products at the Red Department. Concession stands and all that. In exchange for us doing so, they're going to give us new scoreboards on all our fields. And of course, they, they, we've already got covers in all those places from Coke, from previous contract, and they maintain those. And they're also promised a scoreboard for the gym. So it's going to update their facilities, get some nicer scoreboards in place at all of our baseball, softball fields. And there's some other things in it, some garbage cans and signs and stuff that comes along with it as part of the contract. But the Red Board met and had a proposal between, from Coke and also one from Pepsi. They were pretty much about the same. I guess the biggest difference for them seemed to be that within a year, they're going to give the Red Department $3,000 in cash to use how nicely fit, so. I think they'd like to see that money put into the fields.
Won't you tell them what this is valued at, Lynn? I think it's very impressive.
The total package value, the scoreboard funding value was set at $50,000. They also, during the course of this contract, if anything else, those scoreboards or any maintenance needed, y'all got this column, and they send somebody to work on. Event product allocations, $1,500. Signage allocation, $5350. And exclusivity funding, $3,000. That's that donation next year. And the total, total package is $59,850 over a five-year period.
It's very impressive.
Pretty good. And they've also said that any, if we build new fields, they'll put scoreboards on them for us. So it's not just, they're not just going to leave us hanging if we come up with something else, we build another softball complex or whatever, they'll come put, you know, if it's four or five fields, they'll come put scoreboards on all those. And help maintain them as a, I mean, a year or two, you know, wiring and bugs and all kinds of things that go wrong in those boards to use. One thing about this, we have school and other organizations that have concession usage over there. All these different organizations are going to have to buy Coke products, and they're going to have to call them in and have them, have it delivered. You can't go down here to Walmart and buy it or Cash Saver, wherever you got to.
Got to get it from them.
Got to get it from them, of course. And they'll have a, they'll set up a contract or an account for everybody, and you just have to call them up and they'll bring it to wherever it's the Little League concession stand or the concession stand at the high school baseball field, wherever, they'll bring it and drop it off, so.
Does that include quantity?
Including quantity. Anything on city property over there is going to have to go with Coke.
So does Coke do Gatorade? What kind of sports drink does Coke do?
Coke?
It's powered.
And they have bottled water?
The same. They do. And I talked to Scotty Sanderson, I believe he said you could get the bottle or canned drinks.
It basically covers all, basically covers all carbonated beverages, all non-carbonated beverages, fruit juice, fruit punches, isotonic beverages, frozen carbonated beverages, chilled coffee, chilled tea, energy drinks, and all bottled water.
That is.
Pretty wide range.
I mean, this annual maintenance, $10,000 for five years, $2,000 a year. Can you imagine what that could add up to if didn't have that in there? It's great.
So is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. I think it's a good deal. Number eight, a recommendation to see a limited consideration, amending our ordinance, the Hamilton Building permit ordinance. And what this does is give us, after negotiating a second time without our power, in our last ordinance we adopted, they thought some of the wording was vague in what needed to be inspected and what didn't need to be inspected. And we weren't on the same page. Now, I thought we was, but we wasn't. We were still getting calls almost daily, or at least every other day, to inspect a apartment or a house that somebody moved in and out, and a few days later, somebody moved in and out and they weren't inspected. And the whole time, we didn't want to do that because we didn't think we had time, and we still don't have time. What this does now is eliminates that. We won't be inspecting unless it's been off for three months or longer. We won't be inspecting, or a change of policy, or a building or structure has occurred where the lieutenant has moved into a building or structure. In other words, if somebody moves out of a rental house to another rental house, it doesn't have to be inspected. And before they were calling, before they turned the power on, it didn't even want to inspect it. Of non-paving of electrical services. Acts of God, if a tornado or windstorm comes through and knocks down a bunch of power, you're going to have to be, you know, we won't have to inspect it. Our department can go turn that power back on, say they get the service to their house. So what this does with, and they've looked at this, and Britt and I met today, and Francis was here when he came, and we're on the same page. And if we adopt this tonight, as of tomorrow, we'll cut out a bunch of inspections, which the inspections that we really, most concerned with is a new, new house, or an addition on a house where the meter has been moved and house been rewired, or if it's been off for over ninety days, been vacant for three months or longer, it may need to be looked at. Other than now, we won't have to. So, I mean, that's, that's going to eliminate a lot, which we've got new construction going on in town now, a couple of houses and a system for limits facility, which takes time, lots of time on those. And that's what we're going to be more focused on. Anything else, Scott?
I was speaking with them later this afternoon as well and added, it's more of clarification on here, but to also put in that permit part, an existing service where the service was disconnected due to electrical repairs. And we put that in there as well.
Okay.
If that service had been disconnected. Typically, the meter would have been pulled.
That's right. So if the meter's been, if it's been pulled because of electrical repairs, then it needs to be inspected. Okay, I can understand that.
We're held, we're, the city's going to be right in liability on this. We go out there and inspect this, and we turn it on or something out, we're going to be right in the middle.
There will be, yeah, there is liability with inspections.
And you go outside city limits, it's not going, it's not going, county's not going to be liable.
be liable. I don't think we need to get in.
Tim, we're already in, unless you put out. Unless you completely, one-hundred-and-eighty, just do away with everything, we're in it. And what we're trying to do is make it-
Well, I agree, this is better.
It's a lot better.
But what's the difference in a hundred-and-twenty days and ninety days? I mean, who'd come up with a ninety-day board? Alba Power?
Yeah, well, no, they had six months, three, uh, three months, I think. So, I, I mean...
I just don't see where town needs to get in, 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 on the middle of all, all this myself, 'cause, um...
Well, I think, are we not facing a, a greater liability if we don't do something?
Looks to me like Alba Power goes out there and pops that meter on its thing to the town. You know, I don't know. I know they're doing it outside city limits. Nobody's going out inspecting, the town's been off for six months, the meter's been pulled for six months, they're going out there and popping one on.
Right. Because there's no, no type of ordinance, but as long as we have an ordinance, we gotta make it work, and this'll make it work a lot better.
And they have their own, you know, liability, uh, for if they do something like that, there's their potential liability. Like what we ran into here is they're over cautious, they're being overly cautious with their interpretation of our ordinance, so their nice alternative, anyone's on. You miss your bill, you know, miss your payment of your bill, it gets turned off and they're not going back and turning it on until we get the permit. That's probably what we're running into, I mean.
Yeah, I agree, this is a lot better, what, what Florida was.
I'll make a motion for immediate consideration. Okay, Lynn? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye. Is there a recommendation to approve this ordinance?
I recommend it, we do.
Is there a second? I'll say it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, Tim says no. Now, I need to go and adjourn the session for a few days. And I promise I won't be long, but it's a good name of character, has to do with the street forum. So I need a motion to adjourn the session.
I'll make a motion.
Need a motion to, uh, come back into regular session?
I'll make a layer.
Okay, Tim, is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Uh, the only other thing on the agenda is something we're gonna postpone for two weeks, and that would be the, uh, recommendation to... Oh, contract A1 computers. And that will be postponed for a couple of weeks and we'll do it then. Is there any other thing about counsel?
I know he probably can't come to a meeting and tell us anything, but could, I reckon we could get an update, resee and-
Sure.
About anything coming to look at, looking at us, if anything is looking at us or-
I'll, I can get that to come.
Whatever, you need to-
I can give you good update.
We need jobs.
Yes, sir, we do. I agree, one hundred percent. Is there anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? I'll say it. Thank you, Lynn. All in favor, say aye. Uh, thank you.